A minute's time. June nineteenth?
Motion to approve the second.
All right, David?
Aye.
I guess we'll come off the financial until market's there?
Yes.
Public comment?
It's open for public comment if you wish to just...
Okay, so, uh... People are all going to need discussion marks. School committee meeting.
Alright, so, um... As you know, I sent out a proposed meeting schedule change in August. We went to chairs to change the September meeting, but it really should be voted upon by the full committee to change before here. Looking at the schedule, and for those watching, basically what I did is I stacked meetings, um... Outside of the budget preparation months of, so, September, November, December. And in January, February, and March are regular, regular evenings, six o'clock start. The only thing for me to go to, um, that evening, because those meetings can go on longer and you have outside groups coming in, that kind of thing. So basically, it's an attempt to reduce the number of evenings I have out. It's also negotiation year, so the number of expedition meetings I'll be at is going to be whatever. So I'm just trying to get some kind of balance. You know, uh, we did the first, uh, week last week where we actually went to a day meeting. So they had an eight AM meeting, and it was interesting and fun. Uh, they actually enjoyed it, and then we did two in a row that evening and looked out already. It's something we're going to figure out. There's big, uh, crises that they're trying to work through, and we keep giving more time with the president of the meeting. But right now, at six forty-five, I have to leave. Meeting can continue, because it's your meeting, not my meeting. Um, but if we feel that I need to be present for that kind of thing or send a document, we just have to adjust. But I appreciate the initial start to do a, a change. And so I guess we're looking for a vote to approve that for this year. And that's obviously, we have to add meetings or things come up that certainly that's, that happens. I just intend to reduce that a bit.
How about me?
Yeah.
Motion to approve as submitted?
Yeah, uh, any discussion?
I, uh, I don't think, I don't think I was any better at... I was scurrying to be at six o'clock and I was scurrying to be at five thirty. It's just always like, uh, so it's, yeah. Honestly, if we needed to experiment with other things, open it up too, so...
We really get the next meeting's a joint meeting.
Right.
So, um, we'll get the curriculum directors kind of their show for the most part, that means remember, um, those meetings were...
We had, I've only been on one of those regular, these scheduled joint meetings in April, and after that meeting, we had individual school committee meetings for a period of time. With this one in October, do we do the same thing or not?
It's a joint meeting again, because it's the presentations by, basically, Louise Law and Sarah Mitchell. Their presentations of overall, how testing's going, what professional development looks like. Just kind of things the whole committee needs to hear at once rather than be repeated five different steps. They also then, you break out from that meeting to go to individual meetings inside of Frontier Library. So we say, you know, someone goes over there, they reopen the meeting over there, and then they can finish it. If there's any warrants and that kind of business to be done.
Okay.
That's the idea there.
Thank you.
So it's also, I think it's also healthy to hear what other schools are doing and, um... Within that, when they talk about the programming, even though they're separate.
It's something just to see the other schools do this.
Although you guys seen a lot of each other in the last six months, but...
Uh, I think it's a good attempt. I know that the problem is, is the volume of meetings is always going to come. I see another school system here.
Some were building maintenance.
Sure, and actually, um, I highlighted some of the maintenance, um... That was done, um, over the summer in my principal's report. Um, if you'll notice, uh, bottom of the first page, a AC mini-split system was installed in one of our classrooms. Uh, the reason behind this is that we always have summer programs, um, and it's an, an annual thing. Um, and we might be looking to add another mini-split in the future. Um, this summer, we, um, hosted three separate summer programs for students with extended school year. Um, and as we all know, um, at times over the summer, it's pretty brutal from a, um...
Such a cold summer.
Yes, such a cold summer. Um, and a great start to school as well, right? Um, so, and that was, uh, that came out of the SED grant, um, for six thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and nine and four cents. Last year, we applied for two capital projects through the town of Sunderland. Um, one was the hot water heater that was replaced in late August, uh, this past August, and, uh, for seventeen thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars. So those are the two main, um, summer projects that took place in addition to the cleaning of the entire building and watching waxing the floors.
And you have stuff here in the report also on the security camera system?
Yes, yes, I can talk about that as well. Um, so we have, um, uh, the plan from the technology department was to have three separate vendors come in and do a survey and site analysis of the school. Um, end of October, um, the plan is to finish the site visits with, uh, vendors. November, review proposals, technologies, and choose a vendor. And then, once the vendor is chosen, um, we're hoping to, uh, have that installed sometime in February for a fully working new security camera system. Um, and that, and that was the second of two, uh, capital funding projects that we applied for last year.
And the technology folks at, uh, in the central office are riding herd on that?
Yes, yep, yep.
Good.
And, um, and Darius, you could speak to this, but, um, Frontier has replaced its camera system in three phases over the past few years. Um, and they, they put in a system that allowed cameras to be added, um, over time, so it wasn't one big lump sum cost. The...
I can explain it when you just did.
Okay.
There you go.
Alright.
Yeah, so basically, with a system with a server capacity, they have more than dozens of cameras, and they just keep adding every year. They start adding in different spots and, um, and you keep that quiet while we're adding. They just kind of go up, and average is close to a hundred percent there now, and the same thing will happen here.
And some of the cameras, um, were installed by the tech staff, but it's just a matter of weighing how much would that cost to have the vendor install rather than the tech department with the amount of time it takes for them to do it and they could be doing other things as well.
Okay, thank you.
The hot water heater, that was one that had like a small crack that was... That was the boiler, boiler. That was the boiler. Where do we stand on that? Um, one, uh, two, two, one of the plates that, the plate that cracked has since been replaced. And I forget the exact numbers on that. That was upwards of ten thousand for that plate. Um, the long-range plan for that, that room, um, Bob Lestro, our head of facilities, has identified a bunch of other things that, um, can take place. And I can have those for another meeting.
Do you want the numbers in that?
What's that?
Do you want the numbers in that?
You have those?
Yeah.
Oh, you printed it, okay.
Um, seventeen nine, seventeen thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars spent on removing the old hot water heater and installing the new. And we wanted to this fall to clean out some of the miscellaneous things that are in the room. Power wash the space, um, and, um... And then, within that, they replaced the old tank with a rebuild. Replaced the oil spill containment area. Installed oil whileer pump, tampering pump, preventing crack boiler exceptions, that we were talking about. Replaced the oil lines. Um, and then there was miscellaneous pipe duct insulation that had to be done. And then the floor tiles had to be replaced in the building, so...
So it did, seventeen nine, uh...
That was all part of that seventeen nine?
Encompassed the other...
That was, that covered more than just putting in a new hot water heater.
Was prepping, was prepping the space for it, well, the oil line going to it.
I thought those are additional projects that identified.
Is he going to do that additionally?
Yeah. Because I was going to ask about the oil line. That was one of those things that we had to do.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was going, it was seventeen nine to do that part. Those other things are, um...
Stuff that needs to be done.
Did still need to be done.
Those are all on the same as miscellaneous.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, um, so, our oil tank did not have a working pH and had to be, the oil level had to be evaluated manually with the dipstick. And so, the parts that they make, the parts for their particular system are not made anymore. And they would have had to be refurbished one, right? Um, so I think that's kind of part of the long-term plan for that area.
Okay.
There you go.
Ready to, uh, take a minute to...
I'll introduce, this is Mark, Mark, what's your last name again?
Uh, Chappellis.
Chappellis, Mark Chappellis is the representative from TMS who's, um, central evidence member, you know? Will provide the financials as soon as he gets himself situated.
You think, yes, so as far as building projects, those are the main things that that's the place?
We... Did that, the AC, that worked well for that, for the space?
Most special rooms in school.
Yeah.
I'm sure, yeah.
Leave the girl.
Most comfortable room in the school.
Yeah.
That, my office is going to relocate next year.
Summer programs?
Summer programs. Uh, Sunderland stayed quite busy over the summer months. Three separate programs, uh, that are focused on academic, social behavioral, and communication services for our students. Um, our SES staff, um, worked those programs as well as reading and math camps which took place at Deerfield Elementary School and the Medbury Camp which took place at Weyman Elementary School.
Personnel update.
Personnel update. New instructional assistants, Megan Ament, Angelica Hazelton, Georgia Costigan, Iris Evernow, Angela Jackson, Sarah Monders, Elizabeth Nelson, and Lucy Fafano. New faculty members, um, Casey Mathias. And this was the position that we added, um, to, to our, uh, to our team. Um, remember that the funding for this position is pulled from about four or five different blocks of gold. Aaron Sears, our new preschool teacher, and Selena Spearing, who was an instructional assistant at Sunderland last year. We moved her to a co-teaching role in the Horizon program, and now she's our new special education teacher. Uh, tutors in short-term subs. Natalia Desevich is a Turkish tutor in grades four and five. Menexe Sukart is a Russian tutor in pre-K. Sarah Yi and Sunny Park are Korean tutors in grade one. Mingzhu Chen is a Chinese tutor in grade two. Um, well, only, both Natalia and Menexe are, um, K tutors, and the other tutors are volunteers. Um, and then Tanya Manette is a short-term P E sub through the end of September, which is when Patty Jigo, our phys ed teacher, returns from returning.
You ready?
Sure. Good. Um, so in front of you, I have the results of operations for the school through today, beginning with July first. At this point in time, ten percent of our budget is expended. We're going through the process on the budget side of giving all the salaries and the salary adjustments that have occurred in the summer. If you look at the budget, uh, for the most part, it is all in the deposit. There are a couple negative ones I'd really want to mention too. Uh, the first one being we could go to the one, two, three, four, five, sixth section, which is salaries to curricula. Uh, the curricula stipend's fee over the summer, twenty-seven for you. Um, that line is, is not funded. If you look at the budget last year, however, the budget is not, that line is not funded. And there were sixty-two hundred dollars in expenditures. So we'll have a conversation this winter on whether we do the, um, budget transfer to fund that line or allow it to run over as it did last year, because obviously we have a budget to handle. But that line is not being funded, obviously, last year initially. And then also on the second page towards the bottom, there was another line for professional development teachers, which is under by two hundred fifteen dollars. And that was the workshop that took place during the summer. Uh, and that's another line that we cut from the, the principle of, perhaps doing a transfer to, um, fund a bit of that money to, to balance the zero. Other than that, the only other one that sold was transportation by forty percent.
So to speak, thanks, right? Uh, to speak to the professional development, um, on your budget analysis sheet here, uh, I think a few lines up is our, the line item which is around fifteen thousand plus dollars in it, which is where professional development comes out of. Um, and so for some reason, it was logged into a, a line item here that, um, does not have any money in it. So we are, you know, perfectly fine with professional development.
And I think I understand that what, what Patty Cavano, previous business manager, was trying to do in some of those lines was track, even though they weren't funded, just creating lines so that we can track the funding from year to year. So then that, and so, even though, you know, she was taking it like, you know, professional development, then creating subcategories with that, and then paying it, you know, transferring it later in the year so that you get an idea of what you're spending on some of the costs. Because at some point, you want to be able to say, what do we cost, you know, what's the cost for the summer to run? What are, you know, those kind of things? And that's, that's my guess of what's happening there. And she would transfer that later on, depending on, so we could accurately budget.
An example would be if, um, one of our smart boards, the light bulb is doing that. We wouldn't take money out of the textbook line item for the light bulb. We would put it in the technology line item, even if we were over there, so that we would have a sense of how much money we're spending on the year basis.
And I think one of the things you have to keep in mind is, and so over, life happens, and you can try the budget, but none of the expense falls and you lose the budget. And when that happens, you just forget the expenditures and you adjust some money that you didn't.
Or try to prepare for future as well.
Is that, is this will prep us for life, as we know we have expenditures that happen with that.
Um, it sounds like, from what you just said, that you, you know, your way of presenting stuff to us is going to include your, uh, analysis of what problems there might be, or what places we might be, you know, in physical good shape or something like that. I guess I'm saying I hope that's your intention, because, um, that certainly is, to me, much more, uh, useful than just being handed a sheet of numbers and said, you know, if you got any questions, call me. Um, so that, you know, there's not much in this one, obviously, in the case of problems. There gets, you know, there'd be more things to consider as time goes on. And so I'm, I'm just saying that I both hope and sort of expect that part of the monthly financial report is, you know, something that just says, okay, I hear the problems and, you know, or maybe no problem, everything's fine. Or whatever it is, just rather than sort of counting on us to dig through this and try and find it.
Exactly, to your, to your point. I mean, there's no point in going through every single number. You want to know what the issues are.
Correct.
And when you start out this time of the year, I believe there's almost never any issues. And as you go through the year, you might have some tuition that ended up impacting you. And that's the type of stuff I want to let you know, because we don't want to have any surprises as to anything that, you know, might cause the budget to go off plan to the degree that, you know, we need to address it or have concerns about.
Right, great, forever, thank you.
I just got a couple quick questions. So, Mark, I appreciate you coming in, and it's not a short time till we get caught up to speed through. But Darius, when do we meet at, at the chair of the, of the business? Brian, Brian, now, Mark, is Mark going to be with us every time? Or will he be rotating out with Brian being here? Or how's that all going? I'm assuming you and Brian are working in the same group? And have a bird's eye view? Or is, how is that all going to play out with the Fox School?
Well, I mean, we're going to have to, we'll have to alternate based on our schedules to a degree. I mean, he's, I'm here because he's on vacation, but certainly, I mean, he and I both need to be up to speed on all the schools in the other region. So it could be either one of us or both of us. But we both, you know, need to be fully aware of any issues going on to be able to screw right.
So it'd be either Mark or Brian.
All set on finances or other questions?
Are you about to take off?
No.
Okay.
Yep.
So if I have something that sort of touches on finances, is now the time to ask it, or?
It's good.
Yeah, I wanted to just, at some point, ask about, um, just looking ahead. And I realize it's early in the year, but just looking ahead, what I see are challenges that we're going to have come this winter in terms of putting together a budget for next year. And I just wanted to mention these and, you know, just to create some visibility. One would be, uh, that it seems like we're going to lose the sixth grade at the end of this school year that has only one class in it. And so we're going to need one more, we're going to have one more class in this school year of twenty than we do in this year. One more classroom, and that's a sort of space issue. And I know I talked to you a little bit about it last, uh, earlier this year, and I'm not sure, you know, we have to come up with a solution there. And I assume it also means another teacher, uh, which has a budget impact. So that's certainly one thing. Um, and then the other thing that, at some point, if we could get, um, to, to bring up to speed on what the plans might be, is the Horizons program, because my understanding is that there's going to be a change in the, uh, people are aging out, I mean, sixth graders are aging out after this year. And so, how that program is going to look in, you know, a year from now, might be substantially different. And how the dollars work out, I would be concerned, but I really don't have to put... But I think that's something that I would like to get some attention paid to both those things sooner rather than later, because, you know, the one, the extra teacher certainly has an impact, you know, on the way of your life on the budget. And the Horizons one, I'm not sure, it scares me because the numbers are bad.
Well, what's interesting is either you're coaching Ben or Ben is coaching you, because Ben has had the same conversation with me.
That's it.
Clint, we haven't even talked about that.
But that's so, well, it's amazing, that was exactly the conversation Ben had with me, that we need to really sit down. We had a conversation about sitting down and really going through about how we can adjust things and prepare for that. Because you're exactly right, you hit the, hit every single point on the head, like, like you were coached by Ben.
No, haven't talked to him, but it's just...
One or the other.
It just, you know, what you're looking at, when you, when you think about, okay, carry forward the budget to the next year, okay? And I've talked to you, Darius, about how, you know, the town was generous and, 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 I, in my opinion, you know, smart enough to approve the override, but that's a one-time thing. I mean, we don't go back to that well, you know, then for a while. And so, you know, then you're hoping that the budget for, for next year is going to, you know, be comparable to this one with the normal, you know, assumed, you know, inflationary increases or something like that. Well, here are a couple of things that, you know, might throw a monkey right into that. So that's why I wanted, thought, you know, I wanted, you were already ahead of me, but, you know, I wanted to be thinking about that, because I'm not sure how, you know, how bad the problem will be and how, what the options are for figuring it out.
Right. And that's the part, when we spoke, we, that's the next step, we have to just kind of project out what exactly are the numbers and I start working with those numbers. Um, because while every year is, every budget year, you're having different challenges. We can, as we've just kind of stated out, it's very clear that we have some significant ones because of changing programs we are actually having. And so, and all the different numbers have to do with it, because enrollment into, into specialty programs, making the tuitions, you know, and all the...
It's on both the revenue side and...
And so it's...
It's on the revenue side and it's on the defense side. And, you know, I, I'm sort of scared how that could play out, so, okay, thank you.
We also have to be prepared for school choice. It's always a, a difficult one to, for them, particularly here.
So I think realistically, by the November meeting, we will have some sort of, um... What's the term you used before? Using your office, using your office, they would, um, call it a delta.
A delta.
You call it a delta. Basically, they'll have a, 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 an idea of what those numbers look like with the changes. Because I like to have it well before budget season, so that we can then, try to get, how creative can we get with the overall budget? How to address it? And look at how, and how much do we need to adjust? Because I, I don't, I have no idea that the numbers will all be covering twenty, fifty. What is the, what are the numbers we're adjusting? And you got to look at the whole thing, from teachers coming and going, and those, the difference in salary ranges. So I want to talk, so... So we'll have that in November. Good job, that, that.
And, and I was, I was impressed when your boss made the presentation to our, you know, select hiring firm, that one of the things he passed out was a list of various things you've done at different districts where you worked that had increased efficiency of the way, you know, improved processes. There are various things that you maybe were going, you know, the operation's smarter, better, whatever. And so, that's also something I hope that there will be opportunities that you will find here to find stuff that we can do better, smarter, you know, cost-effective, all that such stuff.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
I can tell you, one thing for me that's like a perpetual, and I feel like it's kind of gradually improved every time that we can continue that process, is, um, understanding the full cost of, uh, all line items, not just the cost that's coming out of the town budget piece of it, um, so that, you know... Uh, because it, you know, can mask, it can look like something's gone up or down, and really, it's actually just that the source, you know, there's either some source went away, the funding, and some amount more of it's coming out of town, or, you know, or vice versa. And it just always ends up being a source of confusion as we're going through that budget process. So the ability, you know, and Patty was doing more of that, um, at the end, really kind of making clear how, but, but really at an aggregate level, but, but it was broken down a little more in this last year in terms of what is the total cost through, you know, these different things in school, so...
Well, we typically, we have a format when we build the budget, and it, it's probably the all-in-one's approach. But what it is basically is, you have your total dollars that takes care of the school. You have your local appropriation. The difference between that, hopefully, is made up of other funding sources, being grants, uh, individual grants, any special revenue that you have, you know, school choice circuit breaker. So we bought that out on page, so that, you know, anybody who looks at it, including us, can say, okay, the expectation is we have X number of dollars in this teacher line, and this amount is going to come to the local, this amount is going to come to the school choice. And that way, when the budget actually becomes reality, these numbers start coming in. And the core bill numbers, if they're still projected, you know, you know, if you have a positive or negative situation in that, that line, if you look at it all on one page without saying, here's this report, is that report? It's just an easier, you know, one sheet look at the overall funding sources coming from school.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for putting up with my questions. You're the chairman.
Good. N D S C, N O S S, joint conference.
Alright, so for the joint conference in November, did, you know, you've signed up?
Yeah.
The committee actually has to vote to make you the voting member while attending the conference.
Do I have to be a voting member?
You don't have to vote.
Geez, here, let's roll that question. I don't know what happens if you don't vote.
No, I mean, at the end, you have to go to the darn meeting. I mean, that to me would be the least useful of the meetings I might go to.
I don't think, uh, uh, while you're there.
Right.
I don't think you, I don't, it just means you can vote.
Okay.
There's not an obligation.
I just give the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure how heavy some of these votes that they're voting on is from.
Yeah, yeah.
Past practices.
They do what you gotta do. Anyway, I was planning on going, so.
Yeah.
And I don't gather anyone else is?
Because I'm pretty sure I was a voting member one time here and I, I didn't vote that.
You're sure it's not to vote?
Make one.
Motion to, uh, disagree. Peter, as our voting representative at the M E S C, uh, conference.
Any more discussion on this, um?
All in favor? Anything on this?
All right, great. I'll meet your daughter and send that in, so. If there's a controversial vote, you can be there.
You represent. Look out for Bob Decker, he'll drag you in.
Yeah.
Negotiations, that's.
All right, yes. You guys had already reorganized, correct?
Correct.
Um, I assume so since we're not doing that tonight, they'd reorganized in June.
Yeah.
Right, am I coming? But you did not elect someone to the negotiations team. It is a negotiations year, and so, we will be looking for someone to represent somebody in the, you know, union negotiations, so.
Would the, what is, uh, the, what is the competition in the negotiation team on the, um, school side?
Well, the school, uh, wait.
Superintendent Anticupola Castle shows up and then members of other committees.
Like select board, uh, stake board, take part. Uh, yeah, Dave Pierce was in, was on the last time.
All right. So, basically what it is, is that a school pre-member from each of the four towns and a, um, uh, town government member. Because it has to be select board, it's not a select board, and it's finance, sometimes town administrator, um, as well.
That they're part of the game.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah. And, um, and then I act as support to that. Specifically, you're the ones that are making, I'm there with you, but it's, you're the negotiating and spokesperson is usually the attorney, which I talked to Russell Gray, who's our, Ben, our attorney and his brother Adam. Um, I don't know who's doing what yet, but I was on the phone with him today. It's, I'm guessing it's gonna be him, but it depends on schedule. Because you're gonna have four going. We have two units here, um, teachers and, um, instructional assistants, the same thing's happening up under there. So, it's four, it's four units being part of the issue. So, it's a few meetings. So, it's really the chair's job to appoint somebody, but usually someone offers themselves up to appoint.
I know I've done it before, it's not an hour, but we want to do it. But also, if you have an interest in doing it, and you've done it, it's.
I, you talking to me?
Yeah.
I'm, uh, I'm not eager to do it.
I'll throw myself on that.
I think, I think the authority that you have to chair this committee would be enough right there.
Let's do that.
Second. Do we need to approve it or is he just applying?
It sounds like it.
The chair appoints, but why don't you vote approval? That way we don't really have problems.
Yeah.
And we can say later on, threw himself on there, he wanted to do it, and he's a, a totalitarian type of.
Says we have to have a vote too.
Yeah. There you go.
Revisions to policy.
All right. I'll walk you guys through the policy. How, I don't know how you normally, um, do them here. If you do things individually or if you kind of group them together. Um, but there are two revisions and then there are two new policies. So, the two revisions are first, the meal charge policy, uh, go to the second page of it. The new, um, the new wording is in red and the deleted wording is, is struck, struck through. Basically, we're striking out punishing students who have, um, um, owe us money through lunch program, um, basically by denying them access to senior graduation activities. We never really do that anyways, but, um, uh, they're making that part of the policy.
And that's, clarify, that's for the high school.
That's the high school.
Right, all, all students.
You can't do the same thing with sixth grade either. You can't graduate unless you pay your lunch bill. You can't do that.
Yeah.
All right. And then, um, and then failure to maintain accounts can refer, you refer to superintendent. And my job is to make sure that there's controls in place for this. Not a big change there. You go out and do them one by one, you improve them as a group.
All right. We, we voted to approve.
All right. The second one, student activity accounts. Um, again, this is mostly affecting the secondary, but there are student activity accounts here. Um, but, uh, it's more, you know, basically, it's making sure that you wrap up those accounts after three years. Speaking of, you know, as the frontier principal there last year, we had accounts that, class accounts that are tenured to hold. We're holding on to them for them to come back and use it for their, um, reunions and stuff and that kind of thing. And so, finally, um, you know, we got, you know, when we were audited, they were saying we need a cleanup. So, we started the cleanup process there, reach out. And it's a lot of fun, as I said, at the other school pre-meeting, it's fun reaching out to someone who's class treasurer and they're like, I was? And like, oh, yes, you were. It's, look, you have the program at graduation. Um, we need your signature to, for you to take these funds. And so, basically, it's making sure that you contact two people and, um, move those funds along. And also funds, if you have some debt accounts, I haven't seen your accounts here, but you may have an account that you could have done a fundraiser four years ago and it hasn't had any activity. You gotta move those accounts if they say, I.
We have one student activity account.
So, that covers everything.
Cover everything.
All in and out. So.
And it doesn't get audited any, at any time ever?
What's that?
Has it been audited ever?
I assume so, right?
It's a good question. I know frontier's accounts were audited as part of the auditing that's done each year at the regional level, but I can find out.
I mean, the, I assume that this is, this account is, is held by our town account.
Yes.
And those funds, so it's probably been audited in fact that the funds exist. I was thinking more of, is there a subdivision of that account into its various parts? Like, you know, for whether it's for different classes or different groups or different whatever. Um, I'm sure that the audit we get from the, you know, from our town auditor, just yep, there's that amount of money and it's in the bank.
Mm-hmm.
But not beyond, you know, well, who's got what share of it? Or who's owed to, or who might be, you know, who might be, you know, might be for a sixth grade that left here six years ago. They're just sitting there not being used. And then, you know.
So, is it broken up into some, we can look into this and get that.
It's broken up into a couple of different, so, it's broken up into a couple of different subcategories.
Yeah.
This is main central student activity account, which we put fundraising money in, nature's classroom tuition, which we pay out of, um, anytime donations or sometimes when donations are made to the school, we have folks make it up to the central student activity account so that it's used for scholarships moving forward. Um, I think there's a, there's a library section to it as well. Um, but yeah, it's been very, very helpful.
So, when you see you have one account, that's how most student accounts are set?
Right.
Go, go jump in.
Um, yeah, some of those probably have to be separate. I think the account should be separate from tuition accounts. So, it's something we should look into. I know that's his guideline is usually that accounts, student activities accounts get audited in the split three years.
Right. We, yeah, we can look in and see if, um, because they could, they could have been out of that. I just, something I don't, come in here with that.
It's not a high priority, obviously, but it just something that, you know, yeah, okay, we have.
Oh, it's something.
It needs to be checked.
Yeah. No, it's definitely something you want to be checked because it also, Ben wants it to be checked too because it's a lot, it's money in and out. You want to be actually your.
Right. And there's also maybe money there that, you know, is not got any use, you know, at this point. It's either used for something, you know, used for something else actually, rather than just sitting there.
All right. So, that was that one. And then the next one is, um, is a new M E S C policy for, um, children foster care. Now, these are practices that we're already been doing. Um, but basically, it's, um, working with V C F to, if students are in your district and, um, they need to be placed outside of the district with another family, they are allowed to stay within the district. Also, families that are taking students into our district and, um, they deem that the student needs to come to the school, that we don't slow down the process. That we, you know, um, recognize the urgency to get the student into the schools and that kind of thing. So, that's kind of, it's basically state law, but we've been following that either way. And then the last one is the, um, educational opportunities for military children. This one was put into place, I guess, more for the secondary level, but I guess it could happen at the elementary level as well. But, um, students who are, um, members of military families that are getting moved from base to base, um, many times move mid-year, can be penalized for coming in mid-year. You don't have enough credits. I mean, we have the same thing with, I was talking about from the secondary perspective, students who transfer in their junior year may not have enough credits to graduate on time. What they're doing is they're saying within this, this law that you can't be punishing military families. Um, and you should do your best to find credits, um, offer credits or, um, make up credits and immediately place them into classes. It's not their fault that their families are in a position, um, as they service the country, uh, serve our country rather. So, um, that's basically what that is. We don't have a lot of them, but it is, from time to time, we need those two. That's over a bar and it's, uh, kind of, basically. I don't do that anymore, there's.
Yep.
So, and then basically, I put some there, so. Again, it's not something we, normally, we try to do those kind of things anyways, but this is now.
I'm just saying, we try to do that offering, they're doing that.
Yeah. And it's not like you give a, a new student, you say, oh, you can enroll. And then, you know, two weeks, you gotta wait for the next quarter to start. They're saying you can't do that here.
So, these sound all pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
These sound all pretty straightforward.
Yeah, yeah. There's nothing fancy there.
Motion to approve, uh, the four, uh, policies. Two of them are revisions, two are adopting new policies. I, I did everything.
Second. Any discussion? Oh. Reports. I know we've gone over some of them.
I got more to report on this. Um, and that is that the town contracted, uh, sometime last year and actually hired a group, uh, that started work, I think at the end of March, to do an evaluation of all the town buildings, including this building. And the report has come out. Um, have you seen it? Okay. What I'm gonna do is, I just was in town hall yesterday asking. I went to ask about it and Charlie said, well, we just got it this past week. Um, I will send an email to all parties here with a link to it, okay? Which then I just clicked on, you know, clicked on my link and it put up and I said, download and press for I have PDF on my computer. And it runs roughly two hundred and fifty pages, okay? Um, a bunch of it is photos, okay? A bunch of it has to do with the other town buildings. Um, for this school here, it has, you know, it goes on quite a bit, okay? But to me, it's like, yeah, real work, you know? This is good because I think what we're gonna have here, this is the way I sort of do this. This is a town-wide effort, okay? To do planning and then, you know, fixing of school, of all the various buildings in town under, you know, using this to identify and also to help set priorities and help set timeframe because they've done it in things that need attention within five years, within ten years or within twenty years, okay? Now, um, I will also send you, I went through just today and pulled out all the basic written stuff about this building, okay? And copied and pasted onto one, like, Word document, okay? Which runs about six pages. And it was easier for me to see all the items on here. Now, so you've got that going on. And that's gonna, there's a, um, capital planning committee for the town meeting, meeting next week, which I'll go to, which will sort of, you know, start this process, okay? So, this is gonna be running along, you know, town-led, okay? With coordination, which I will try to arrange as it seems appropriate with Bob Lesko or with Darius or with Ben in terms of saying, hey, you guys ought to come to this meeting because we're gonna be talking about school stuff, kind of thing. And, uh, there was a meeting last winter where, uh, you and Lynn and Bob all showed up and we got basically the approval in that one meeting, uh, to do these couple of capital projects. And so, this is like, you know, on the one hand, we've got like probably another round of smaller capital projects coming up, but the bigger picture is we've got this whole study so that even this next round of capital projects for the town is gonna, I think the effort could be try to fit those within a much bigger picture stuff. Now, Bob Lesko also produced a, uh, plan. He saw that spreadsheet with a number of different items, short-term, medium-term, longer-term, so on. Um, I noticed in reading this one we just got that, you know, I saw a couple of things that he didn't identify, like dealing with the oil department, okay? So, there's gonna be probably some stuff on, you know, somebody, you know, whether it's Bob or, you know, whoever needs to sit down and say, okay, what might be left off the town thing? Because we wanna make sure we've got everything, you know, on the table, okay? And to me, so you've sort of got, on the one hand, you've got, uh, you know, Bob continuing to work on stuff, okay? And then you've got this going to the town, and I don't see them as competing. I see them as this is like giving more visibility, okay? The fact that it's, that the town has, you know, commissioned this study, paid for this study, and is now gonna have a committee figuring out, you know, how to implement the stuff and how to pay for the stuff is great because, you know, once again, this makes it everybody proud for dealing with stuff at this school. And it makes the committee much more likely that, you know, the funding this meeting will have many more voices, you know, thinking, yeah, we need to do that. And not just try and come from this one committee. So, I will, I'll go to this meeting next week. And generally, what I do afterwards is just send out some notes if there's anything of regular relevance. It's not meant to be discussion because that, you know, you can't do that with a meeting law. We can have discussion at some point. At some point, it would be good to get Bob to come to one of these meetings for a, you know, update discussion on where stuff stands, but I think that can wait a little bit. You know, probably sometime, you know, a little bit December, January, something like that might be useful. Um, but this is going on. I'll send you both a link to the full report and my sort of just extracting all the words about our school and take a look at it and just to, you know, get yourself educated. Because this stuff, I think we got, I think things are lining up to make some progress on this stuff over the next two, three, four, five years, something like that. And, um, you know, we just wanna make sure we're, you know, we got, we're not, we're at the table. We've got all the other players at the table too, um, making this happen. So, I'm encouraged by it, even though it seems like a lot of our people. But certainly, this building is way better shaped to be, you know, the town hall, or the, not, not the fifty town hall, the old elementary school. That's kinda where I'm from.
Did you say the meeting next week was at?
Capital plan.
Proving?
Capital planning committee.
Okay. So, it's not a specific one on the, the report, it's their standard?
It says, no, but the meeting's being held because now the report is out. And so, I'm sure it's gonna be like, okay, let's start talking about how we're, you know, what we gotta do, okay? And I'm not a member of the committee, but I'm, you know, you all, I mean, I could be because there is legally a spot on it for a school committee member. But then that puts me in the situation of having to, um, basically feel, you know, like I'd have to educate on all the other buildings too, and I'm not really a building person. So, it's just, I feel like I'm, you know, it's better for me just to show up at the meeting and they know where I'm coming from, but, you know, it worked okay last winter and that's, that's my intention this year too. So, and again, I just try and let you all know because I'm, you know, it's important that we all be on board with what's going on here. And you too, because, you know, you see stuff at the school and, you know, some of the things in that report were fairly minor things and, you know, they would be, you know, that's their view of little stuff that needs to be fixed too. And this will give that stuff more visibility too, and those stuff's been bothering you. Okay? Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks.
So, just, uh, Mr., you saw a list that Bob Lesko has. He has stuff on it, but not necessarily everything.
I think some of the stuff, so that list that Bob Lesko put together for us last spring and then was used, uh, in some of the, uh, capital planning meetings, where they, you know, looked at it, referred to it. But then this report that came out, what I heard you say is not everything that was on Bob's list was in. But then this report that came out, what I heard you say is not everything that was on Bob's list was in that report.
Well, all I know is, all I know is the oil tank's not on.
Well, there we go.
I looked at the three things...
So that's not all?
I looked at the three things that we had been presented to this committee in, I think, at our May meeting is to, okay, we got these three issues with the building and what are we gonna do if we got any money, you know, what do you want to do? And one of them was dealing with the problem with the septic discharge unit and we took care of that. And one was dealing with the oil tank and the lack of a gauge and then sensors that might be failing. And we sort of, we thought we had some money to do some stuff on that, but it turns out we didn't. And then the third one had to do with repair it to the boiler. And we got one thing fixed that we had, you know, we got covered by town insurance, but there's still other stuff that, you know, for, you know, more preventative needs to be done, so...
If maybe there was action to reconcile some of these things.
Well, I think a lot of the first step is send me the report. I'm gonna ask for Bob's report.
Right. Just to make sure, just to make sure that if we have...
If they ran off Bob's information, I don't know, it was completely independent or they...
No, he was here when they were doing the tour.
So we can see if they either missed something or...
Right. But I think, you know, so it's moving forward and I think it's gonna be, you know, it's, none of it's gonna be easy, but I think it's, it needs to be done and we're, we're in the right place at this moment and going in the right direction.
The meeting's, yeah, we have, uh, it's, it's the beginning of the meeting here, so the, as we...
My friend has a favor, right?
No. Uh, next week. Do we call it that? I, yeah.
You are?
I believe so.
Right? Well, that's good because I saw my name next to it and I didn't realize that was me.
Oh.
Your name's next to it.
Yeah.
Keith Steve's next to it.
Yeah. I don't know how, a little surprised to see it.
We know at the meetings, that's how you probably got them.
I try not to skip those meetings when they go on a different...
Because here are the Frontier Act, or Frontier Act. Yeah, I, I, um...
You want the outcome?
If you, uh, well, I'm, it's...
Wow.
Sure, I mean, I've done it before.
No, keep on fighting.
Unless it was somebody else. It's not all fighting. It's a good group, it's, you know, it's not that much of a...
Is it something that chair can just re-designate as our different...
You can change it anytime.
Pretty sure yes. Yeah. Let's do that.
Okay.
Pulling the glass particles in, just hold me some free shots.
Got it.
Yeah, I'll step back.
So, Principal's report?
Just, I pretty much touched on everything, new hires, summer programs, summer maintenance. On the back day, included on a Tuesday, September 4th, the state primary elections were held for our town here at Summerlin Elementary School. Primary elections happen every couple of years and it proves to be a challenge for students and staff for all the, um, hoops that we set up for that day, hiring police officers and locking interior doors and, you know, the thing about it, we are on complete lockdown when students are here for 179 days a year. And then on Sunday, maybe a day, the doors are, front doors are open for, for our public. So just something to consider and discussions have started with county officials to possibly look at changing the voting location from the county center.
From where, library?
Possibly the library, yeah.
That's the only other one that's got easy accessibility.
And from my understanding is they would need to replace the voting equipment.
The only other thing that I've ever seen is just a professional development day every now and then.
So we do that from November. So November election day is professional development day.
It's gonna be a whole day or half day?
It's the whole, so there's always been a whole day, I won't say, based on past practice, there's always been a whole day in October, beginning of October, and what they did is they moved that to election day. I think the last presidential election, maybe before that, maybe that the professional development day made sense because the kids out of the building was within the same, within a week period.
If we were to make this day a PD day, Summerlin's only counter or district where voting is held at the school.
It wasn't always that way, but it is now, yeah, so...
Yeah.
You're talking to the town about that or...
Yeah, and, uh, in touch with Wendy Moore and she has talked at, um, I don't know what it's called. So, yeah, I'll see where it goes. And we're a couple of years out from the next primaries. Yeah, it's a lot.
Then the, oh yeah, and the, the town, the annual town elections are on a Saturday?
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember if it's February or Saturday, okay? Yeah, so it's really just the primary is...
I know that, uh, there's, there's statistically significant effect where issues around schools spread better with voters when the voting location is a school. That's just one point to consider.
It's the only time some people actually ever been in here. But it still is to be...
So we shouldn't do it at the local jail. Should be at the school.
Fair enough. You know, and there's, there's two, two sides to it, right? So it's, this is the hub of our community, the elementary schools, and then there's also the safety side of it. You know, with that being said, we did have two police officers on duty throughout, throughout the day, during recess, during arrival, during drop-off, during business times, during the school, in our parking lot at least. But, you know, I think we go many different directions with, with those.
Is it this, how disruptive is it in terms of the actual education that you're in?
It's not disruptive to the actual education.
It just concerns about more basically safety?
Um, important dates coming up, we have our first P T O meeting of the year tomorrow night at 6:30 in the cafeteria. Early release day, Fall Walk and Roll the School Day is on Thursday, September 27th. Walk and Roll the School Day is when many members of our students, staff, parent body either walk or ride their bike to school. It's a celebration of fitness and healthy lifestyle choices. Later that day, that morning actually, is our first lockdown drill, which is an announced drill at 9:30 a.m. I send out a, a letter summarizing the various safety drills that take place at Summerlin Elementary School in the course of the year, just to let parents know and lockdown drills are included on that. We would always make sure the first lockdown drill is announced. Discussions are held with students in advance, communication is held with parents in advance. Anytime we have a special drill like that, other than a fire drill, let's say, I, I will give parents a heads up a day of at the place and, you know, if there's ever any questions, feel free to get back to them. First two, Monday in October is our school council meeting, that's the first one of the year at 3:15. The next evening is open house on October 2nd. That week also a joint school committee meeting, more early release days. And School Picture Day is October 1st. Any questions? Principal's report?
Something, Dean's report?
Dean's report. We're passing around at the same time the warrants you signed. It was sheer procedure here, how we do it, but I'm sure you can, our court's not so enlightening that you can't sign warrants. I just wanted, we have, obviously, we're a few weeks in now, but we've got a school opening, all the schools. I just wanted to introduce the new, you know, we consider ourselves a greater district, not just our one elementary school district here, but we have Christine Curtin, who's new principal over at Wheatley, and George Lanitas, who's new principal over at Frontier, and Carolyn Eddie, who used to work at Frontier, who's now the assistant principal at Deercliff Elementary. And that's obviously a met mark here, assuming. I will be creating an entry plan and I'll be presenting at the joint meeting next month. It's gonna be a modified plan, basics I mean in term, but I also want to make sure that I have goals and direction for anything going and not just sitting on the status quo. You guys already talked about the conference, the M A S C, M A S S conference, I'll be going through that. A great time here. Software update, the second page of the, or maybe it's the second or third page, depending on how it's fitted together. You know, I like to kind of give an update on all the software updates that are happening throughout the district at all the elementary schools. I think it's interesting to see all the things the IT department is doing. You know, overall software, you know, district-wise, at 1.5 million, I think, we've invested in software. So when you start talking about, it's not just hardware, it's setting up of computers that they're doing. When you kind of read through that, you can kind of get an idea what the schools are doing, what was done here. It just, it kind of gives you kind of an idea of the scope of the work they do because they do, they do work hard and Scott Paul and his crew does a great job under them, they're grateful to have his leadership in that. So I just wanted to kind of throw that kudo out there. Oh, I, I kind of, I started, I read software and then it's read the IT update. Um, we are using Infinite Vision software now and I don't know how much was talked about it here last year, but basically, it's giving the ability for Ben to now to go straight into all principals, but particularly this, this is Ben to go right in and see his budget, what is encumbered, pretty much live. Crazy or not, it's not what was happening in the last 50 years. If Ben wanted to know what a balance was, he would have to call over to the central office. You would have internal balances kept at his office, but to have the exact recording stood, you had to call over. So you can imagine the second half of the year, there's a lot of calls and emails trying to figure these out. Now, he can kind of keep an idea of himself. There is a learning curve on that, we've already done some personal development with Mark on that. And the IT group, as we're trying to set up a different permissions, make sure you can't overdraw accounts. There's a lot of safeguards that are put in place with the software. So it's taking us into the next generation, we're already kind of a generation behind because we should have already been there years ago, but it's a good, it's good for us guys. So I don't know if there's any comments on that, but you like it, right?
Love it.
Love it, alright?
I was just gonna ask, like, in terms of encumbering things, like, like, to what extent, like, salary, you know, teacher salaries, like, how, how, will that, does that, can that be encumbered in advance and, or, you know?
It can, it hasn't yet, but that's a goal. That's really, that's 60 to 70% of your budget.
Right.
And it's a really, a good tool to know, once you finish your hiring, already you're much above the standard. I mean, right now, what we're doing is looking at the separate Excel spreadsheet, we're gonna, we're gonna get to the budget, seeing where the standard is, can we cover salaries, you don't have to do that. It's a little bit of a task and we, it, I guess, one of the goals then this year, we've also kind of set up to do it that way, but we'll, we'll get to that, okay?
And with all our very new hires, we're okay as far as having the salary money to pay for all.
At this point, yes, yeah.
I'm assuming you would have said if we weren't.
And then the last thing is that, a little side project I'm working on that was, is the files over at Christian Lane. The Frontier Committee is in the final stages of selling that building, they have a purchase and sale. But there are a lot of Summerlin files there and so I'm working with vendors on what we're going to do with them. But I just bring it to everybody's attention, there is a lot of files. And our, my, currently, my goal is to keep them together, there's been some talk about sending them back to the town so that they belong in. But the central office uses all the files and so there's tractor-trailer loads. We've already, you know, the meeting and whatnot, the Ben...
Are you getting, determining if there are some that don't need to still be kept?
Yeah, last Wednesday, we shredded three times.
Okay.
Yeah. And there was already, I think, I think Ronnie had told me, there was already 10 times shredded last year. So it was just one of those things where you had space, there was no need to, you know, need as much as we have to now. And so I am meeting with the Ben, I just met with him last Friday regarding trying to bring, move the files out of there, get them organized in a more retrievable system and a rotating system because some files can be destroyed after seven years, some files you have to hold on to forever, which files can be digitized, which files have to be photographed. And it's a kind of a, and what should we do based on cost and, and that kind of thing. So the Frontier Committee has money set aside to deal with part of this file problem, so... Patty actually took care of that, it was a smart move by Patty as well, to put some money aside to do that. So there is a little money to take care of that, but I'm just saying they are, Summerlin Elementary files are sitting over in waiting in that building, so...
Have you ever talked to any of the town courts because they've got the same problem dealing with the town file?
Using the same, uh, not using because I've been selected, but I consulted with the same vendors that Deercliff has used and I believe some of them have used them as well. So there's a few vendors in the area that do certain things from shredding to, we're looking at the different proposals now.
I mean, we got a nice size hole, but I'm not sure whether it's 10% hole, 15% hole, or 18% hole.
And we'll reach out and find out.
Well, you know, we...
What the rental would look like.
Yeah.
Any questions on that? That looks good.
Thanks. We all have?
Thank you. That is that.